ourselves, the purpose of the of the public hearing is to sit back and listen and to hear. And it's also a chance for the public to step up and speak and and to feel like their voices being heard. A lot of people in the public say, I don't want to speak, or nobody cares. I can go there and talk, or I could write a great speech and nobody's going to listen to me. And that's sad. So we, you know, we all, we're all here. There's a lot of us here. Usually I ask different groups to stand up, but we're all out here. We're all here to, you know, if we're on the budget side of things, we're here to listen. If we're on the taxpayer and community side, we're here to offer our thoughts and share our our wisdom. And that's what we're here to do. So let me read my my speech. And then we'll we'll go forward. What what we'll do is we'll read the speech. If any other members of the Board of Finance want to make a statement, they can. And then we'll we'll turn to the Board of Ed, then we'll turn to General Government. We'll hear from Mrs. Carmody, the Chair of the Board of Ed. We'll hear from Mr. Shota, the Town Manager, and then we'll go forward and hear from the public. So just starting, starting the speech on behalf of the Southington Board of Finance, I would like to welcome everybody to this public hearing. Ask that you all put your phones on mute and we'll talk about the protocol just a bit. But welcome you all to the public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget. We were in a fiscal year, so the thing starts July 1st and ends June 30th. So it gets a double name, the 2020-2021 budget. And today is March 2nd, 2020, March 1st, 2021. Last year was March 2nd, I didn't update that. Okay. Just a reminder, in the audience, we have a lot of elected officials with us. And there's a lot of people here to hear the comments of the people. And there's people from certainly the Board of Finances here. But in addition, we have members of the Town Council, members of the leaders in education are with us, the Town Manager, the Board of Education, and and various department heads in the town and and concerned staff of the Town of Southington, along with people. I want to explain the process used to develop a budget and to levy taxes. While we are one town, our budget is essentially developed in two parts. There's the Board of Education budget and the General Government budget. At a high level, the elected Board of Education presents the educational programming or an operations budget to the Board of Finance. At the same time, the Town Manager presents the General Government budget. And included in the budget are revenue items, predominantly state grants and local service fees, and then the expense items. The expenses are much greater than the grant and fee revenue. So once the budget's put together and approved, we levy taxes to make up the difference. The town maintains a grand list, which includes all residential and commercial property, vehicles, business property, and all of these assets are assigned a value based upon their market value. The amount of money needed to balance our budget is levied to the to the owners of the property on the grand list based upon the amount of property, the value of the property they own. So if you have more property, you pay more. You have less property, you pay less. And when everybody pays their taxes, we achieve 100% of what we need to balance the budget. Interestingly, in the private sector, which is much like a family setting, your your income and assets determine your expenses. So if you're a family, you say, how much money do I make? What do I have to the bank? And and you, some combination of that tells you what you could spend to operate your family for a year. And in the government, in the public government sector, the spending is determined first, and then the income required to meet that spending is levied on the taxpayers. It's it's the complete opposite. And that's one of the reasons why we have a board finance. Because it's it's an interesting thing when you're when you're spending somebody else's money on other people. It requires careful oversight, right? There's like four ways to spend money. You could spend money on yourself. And you're very careful because it's your money and you want to get the best value. You could spend money on somebody else. You can take your money and spend it on somebody else, buy him a gift certificate, buy him dinner. You're still being very, very careful because it's your money and you want to exert from it the best value. And but when you spend somebody else's money on other people, it requires very careful oversight. And and that's what we're here to do. Without careful oversight, it's easy to both overspend and overtax. The Board of Finance is your citizen volunteer board. It exists to carefully review the budget and the financial health of the town in conjunction with the needs and desires of the town residents and businesses while considering the health of the state and the overall economy and its impact on the citizens. In a careful oversight process, the Board of Finance will recommend the budget to the Town Council. Once the Town Council approves the budget, the Board of Finance will set the mill rate. And it's the mill rate multiplied by the property you own on the grand list that determines what what taxes are paid. The complexities or risk factors that face us as we recommend this budget are the COVID-19 pandemic far north of the biggest one. Uncertainty at the state of Connecticut. We need to consider the impact of any new state tax or grant adjustments on our local taxpayers. And the general government, where we need to maintain our infrastructure, face the reality that as we grow as a community, there's more demand placed on town services that need to be addressed. As we introduce the the budget, please keep in mind a few points. We remain a healthy community in what continues to be a financially troubled state. Now, this has been in my speech for multiple years because we have been for multiple years a healthy community. And while that's the best position to be in, it also makes us a target for reduced state grants or or state cost push downs as large municipalities face greater uncertainty in their budgets and they require assistance from the state. So what that means is if the state gets into trouble, sometimes they'll cut back from a town like Southington to help another town in a more distressed state of affairs. So that's a risk. The total budget is a request for $160.4 million, which is 2.2 billion more than the current year. The Board of Education is seeking an increase of 3% or 3.3%. General Government actually sees a decrease of 1.2 million. And grand list growth of 1.2% grew. And it grew not because of, it grew because of new new things. And it will provide 1.5 million of new tax revenue. And I'm going to pause to explain that just a bit. At the current mill rate, this grand list growth reduces the tax increase that would have otherwise been required to cover new spending. So we're very thankful to have growth and we credit those that make it happen. I want to pause on this point because it's often misunderstood. There are a lot of folks, and I've worked in accounting. So these are folks very close to numbers when I worked in accounting and and folks dealt with this in their own towns. When revaluation happens and they see their house, if they live in a house worth $300,000, revaluation comes along and says, guess what? Your house is now worth 350. And they smile for a moment, and then they say, oh, oh, my taxes are going to go up. It's a common correlation folks make. And the answer there is maybe, maybe not. And I just want to explain that so everybody has a has a good understanding. If the total value of the grand list, the total net value, we're at $4 billion. If if the grand list, if every house in Southington went up and they all, let's say, every single house doubled in value, we would still pay the same amount of tax per property. But if some of the houses, which is a common occurrence, sometimes the big houses are desirable and sometimes the economy shifts and the and the more modest homes are more desirable. So you could have the big house drops in value, the little house gains in value, or vice versa. If you have just a shift and the net grand list, the bottom line pretty much stays the same, then the mill rate stays the same. And the guy with the bigger house pays more or less and the guy with the smaller house pays more. If the grand list stays the same. But if the entire grand list raises, then the mill rate lowers. It is never the objective or the intent of revaluation to garner more taxes from people. The intent of revaluation is to provide the balance and make sure every piece of property is valued properly so that when the mill rate is applied, everybody's paying their fair share based upon the market value of their home. And the assessment, 70%, but it's all still based upon the market value of the home. I'm happy to explain that to any folk who want to get more in depth on that because it's still a very confusing thing. Because at the same time that we are going through a revaluation, which we did this year, every five years we go through revaluation, every 10, you know, every other time it's a hard revaluation where they come and look at your house and inspect it and do a very thorough job. And every five years, it's a basic revaluation where they use some measurements and and revalue it based upon the information they already have. Common, you know, you have revaluation happening, you have the new budget happening. And a lot of people just, it it causes confusion easily because there's many moving parts. And I don't want to spend all day on that. But just to let you know, it's never the intent of revaluation to garner more taxes. So anyway, the grand list grew by 1.2%. That means new things appeared on it. That's not revaluation. That's new thing. Somebody built a new house and it landed on the grand list. That's new property. And if you tax that at the current mill rate, that that was going to bring us 1.5 million of new tax dollars coming from new property. In addition to that, all property got revalued, the mill rate got reset. So we could talk about that another time. Included in this budget is the use of the excess rainy day funds money for capital projects. We're going to be using 1.8 billion from our rainy day fund, but it's from the excess. It's not really from the rainy day fund because we're supposed to keep that at 10%. It's from the excess. We have more in there. So we're going to scoop it out and we're going to use it for capital projects. Because there's no sense to, the government shouldn't be building money and not taking it from the taxpayers and not using it. So we are going to release 1.8 million. And if you remember, last year, we released money to buy North Center School, the building we call the Municipal Center. So that's done. That was done last year. This year, we take 1.8 million. So that helps us, taking 1.8 million there, getting 1.5 million new dollars from the grand, from the grand list really makes Southington a great place because we're able to do that. So anyway, and the the rainy day fund gets built up when we have a surplus. So when you read in the paper, Southington had a surplus, it goes in the rainy day fund, then Southington takes it out and they use it for capital. You know, we could see we're able to buy a fire truck, a new fire truck went in service this year. You guys will be seeing it driving around town. There's other projects. We're glad to be in the position we're in. The combined carrying on here, the impact on the taxpayer of this budget as submitted. Now, this is not the Board of Finance budget. This is the budget coming from the Board of Ed, coming from the Town Manager, as submitted. A home appraised at $200,000 with an assessed value of $140,000 because the assessment is 70% of the market value. That that will see an annual property tax increase of $127. So again, a $200,000 house sees a property tax increase of $127. So if you had a $400,000 house, you double it. If you have a $100,000 house, you half it. Just a reminder, the Board of Education budget includes educational program and not necessarily businesses, I mean, buildings or teacher retirement. The buildings fall on the general government side of the budget. We are one town, but just to tell you where it is. And there was some talk about teacher retirement. Teacher retirement is funded by the state of Connecticut. That is not funded by the town. The town serves in a capacity like a landlord because the town on the town side has the buildings and the school side has the program and no rent is exchanged as we're one town. So currently, right at this point, the Board of Finance is in the process of reviewing the budgets to understand the revenue estimates and the spending needs as expressed by the Town Manager and the Board of Education. The Board of Finance is collaborating with taxpayers in this meeting, collaborating with taxpayers to determine their priorities and thoughts regarding the budget. Every member of the Board of Finance is committed to collaborating with all stakeholders, assessing the economy, asking questions, seeking input, serving as a voice of reason, and ultimately making a fiscally responsible recommendation to the Town Council. You are all here tonight to provide valuable input as we work towards finalizing our recommendations. We are committed to being a government that respects, works for, and is accountable to its citizens. Taxpayers can participate in the process by reviewing the budget, voicing opinions, watching the meetings and workshops in person or virtually. You can look at Cable Channel 14, you can look at meeting, the streaming of meeting videos on the web. You can communicate with us as we move forward towards a final recommendation. All citizens should remember that we strive to do what's in the best interest of the entire town, both the short term and the long term. What that means is we, we're not always, and we're not in favor of kicking the can down the road. If we know we have needs as a town and we know the town is going to live on for a very, very long time, then we have to ensure that we've done our job for both the short term and the long term. As we work towards a budget, we must remain mindful that Southington's made up of over 43,000 people and many diverse businesses, each with different needs, different expectations, different financial situations, in different stages of life, impacted differently from the economy, possessing different views on the role of government and holding different opinions on the scope of education that should be provided to our youth. Our recommendation must not only take into account the diversity of our people, and economic times we face as a as a community, mainly due right now to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on people, jobs, businesses, the state, the future, people's health. On an ongoing basis, this board asks a lot of questions in public and in private. It collaborates with many people. It strives for responsible spending, seeks to eliminate waste, it seeks to drive transparency. It encourages management to set a vision to prioritize and ultimately seek the most cost-effective manner in which to finance government operations. This is what we commit to do. I will now ask any other member of the Board of Finance wishing to speak if they'd like to make a a comment before we continue. Just do so by going to the comment section, putting in your name, and then Jay will open it up. If anybody would like to speak or raise your hand, if I can see it, we'll open up the line. All right, there'll be other opportunities. I will now call upon Mrs. Terry Carmody, Board of Education Chair, to speak on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Larry. We present that represents a 3.3% increase. That is an increase that allows us to maintain level services for our students and meet the needs of all of our students. As you can imagine, COVID-19 has presented many unique challenges. And I am proud to say that our administration and our entire staff have worked diligently to meet those challenges. Our community has always supported our school system. They believe in the Southington school system because we do do a good job. So I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Finance to support our budget as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll turn to our Town introduce the Town General Government Budget.
Thank you, Chairman Larry. First, before I begin, I want to thank obviously all my department heads who are here tonight and will be prepared to answer any questions that the public has. Obviously, I will also thank my my right arm when it comes to the budget, our fine budget director, Amelia, who's also here to answer any questions that you have. Mr. Chairman, you stole a lot of my thunder, so I had to cut my speech down a little bit with your, using your speech. But that being said, I'm proposing to the Board of Finance an operating budget of $43,933,014. That represents a 2.81% increase or $1,502,854. The driving forces behind that are as follows. Like most budgets for municipalities and for Board of Education, salaries drive the budget. This particular year, we have a little bit of an anomaly. We have $258,000 for what we call retroactive or catch-up raises. We have the Rank and File, which is the town's biggest union. That's got a two-year catchback, which means the budget that we just approved, excuse me, the the contract that we just approved goes back to July 1st, 2019. So the money is necessary for that. With the current raises that we have for fiscal year '22, '21, '22, that's $275,000. We have to put in contingency the three contracts that I'll be negotiating this spring, which are fire, police, and dispatchers. That number is $260,000. And also, we hope if all goes well that we receive the safer grant. The Director and I have put aside $135,000 in contingency to cover that for the three firefighters we hope to get from the federal government grant. Also, the driving, the driving force behind that, the increase in MERS and payroll taxes. As I'm sure you're aware, MERS has put a burden on both the BOE and the town to increase the MERS contribution. Now, it's a burden that has to take place. For years, the state has been using what we all figure to be not very conservative numbers when it comes to the the MERS fund. So they have been taking some responsibility and lowering the return that they expect on the MERS, which we all knew they had to do. But that means there's going to be additional burden on the town and the BOE to cover the MERS. That being said, that's an additional $461,900 on the town government side. Also, I'm asking for an increase in the capital in the operating budget. Last year, I asked for $312,000. This year, I'm asking for $566,000, which is an increase of about $255,000. One of the biggest driving forces there is that we are going to be updating our public safety radio system, and that's $306,000. We'll be doing that over a next five or six year period. So that being said, the operating budget, those are the driving forces to to go up to 2.1%. Mr. Chairman, you also mentioned capital. Capital is vital because obviously you do not want to buy large items using operational budget money because of course that means that's a that's a dollar for dollar to the taxpayer. So when you have a fund balance, as the chairman mentioned, you want to use that fund balance if and only if it's used for one-time capital expenditures and you have enough money as a buffer. Southington has been blessed over the last many years to have that kind of buffer. So I'm recommending that we use approximately $1.8 million out of the fund balance. And then I'm also planning using for budget reallocation money from the 2021 budget into the 2021-22 budget of $1.7 million. Last year, in comparison, we used $4.49 million of fund balance. Oh, obviously, a large portion of that was the, was the John Wysock Center, which we purchased last September. And then the previous year, I used 1.6, 1.55 of budget reallocation money. This year, I plan on using 1.7. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I believe that this is a conservative budget for conservative times when it comes to the COVID aspect. Obviously, there are, there are things that had to get done, which we are doing. We are, we're buying what we need to buy for for capital. We are doing things that would need to be done with our infrastructure. We got the benefit of the the public granting us the $10 million bond authorization last November. And we'll be using that wisely on our road and bridge projects. As I mentioned to you before, Mr. Chairman, I look very forward to working with the Board of Finance and eventually the Town Council in in this budget. And tonight, just for the public's sake, we have all our department heads here who put their budgets in. So therefore, they're here to answer any of your questions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the public has. And of course, our Finance Director, who knows the most about the budget, will be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
All right, I thank you. I thank you, and I I thank the Board of Education too. And and I also thank the wisdom to bring in all the department heads because I think it's important everybody collectively hear from the town. And then when you're putting together a budget, you always have that echoing in your ear. You always remember, and again, back to my earlier point, a lot of people believe, why should I go? Why should I talk? And I I teach the Boy Scout Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge and Citizenship in the Nation, the the required merit badges to become an Eagle Scout. But when you talk about that, it's very hard to tell young, young kids, you have a voice. Like I have a voice. I'm I'm told where to sit, where to stand, what bus to get on. My whole life is scripted for me. I have a voice. And you, you always have to have to hold out hope and look back to that Norman Rockwell picture that hangs called The Citizen that hangs in our town hall where where you see a picture of a of a man coming up to speak. He's nervous. He has some notes. His hands are dirty because he was working in labor. And he comes up before his government, not knowing what to expect. Maybe not the most articulate. You're just trying to interpret from the picture. But he he's brave enough to come forward with whatever issue was on his mind and bring it forth to his government. And I just want to make a a reminder, that's a nice picture, number one. But number two, nobody should ever, you know, should come before us. And when you find out, when you get to know everybody, and I and I have the pleasure now of 10 years, 11 years of this, knowing everybody, everybody's a regular, regular person. Volunteers on Board of Ed, Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, all these other boards, zoning appeals, Police Commission, Fire Commission, they're they're citizens who who stood up to volunteer. And and because of that, every one of us is ready to listen and just do what we can. We can't do everything everybody wants, but we could listen and and we all commit. Every one of us commit to doing that. So thank you all for being here, every department head, every leader in our, in our, in our town. What we're going to do now is hear from you guys. And you will not hear from me again or anybody else. And we're going to listen now to the public. All we're going to do is just cue everything up. So we have the chat open. So if anybody would like to go to the chat and put your name in and say, I'd like to speak, and then tell us so that Jay could help find you and make sure you're unmuted. Just tell us if you dialed in with a phone number. Give us the last couple digits so we know what line to to unmute. And then in a very orderly manner, we'll let everybody who's here to speak, speak.
Just a reminder, Mr. Chair, if if you're on a phone and Jay calls you to say you're next, please press star six and your phone will become unmuted. So at this point, obviously, Jay Baker will will open up and please put your name in the chat room. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Jay, if you'd also just scan, if anybody just raises their hand and waves a little bit, we'll find you and we'll be able to open up your line and and hear from you. So please, share, share your thoughts. And we open it up. I just don't see anybody in the chat room. I'll scroll across. People here. So we have 60, 60 participants. All right, we'll try it a different way. If anybody would like to speak, unmute yourselves. Just let's be as respectful and we'll kind of go in order like a four-way stop.
Mr. Chairman, I have a Christine Keska who'd like to talk.
Absolutely. Welcome, Christine. Christine, are you unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, go ahead, Christine.
When I start talking, it moves me again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if this works. Can you see me? That's the next question.
Not sure. There's 60 little boxes in front of me. I don't know who's who.
You're sending your video. See me now. Right ahead with a child?
I see your name. Your name is there, not not a picture.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess I'll just
I see you. I think I see you. Yes.
All right, I'm going to
Just go right ahead.
All right. So my name is Kristen Keska, and I live at 149 Long Spring Road. My husband's Max Keska. He's in the room. This is my daughter Evelyn Keska, and my infant is upstairs sleeping, hopefully for the length of this public speech. I support both the Town and Board of Education proposed budgets as is. And as you had mentioned, Chair, that, you know, in a town, we don't want to overspend or overtax. And I have never thought that Southington has done either. So I'm happy to hear about the 1.2 grand list growth. And I think since I've been one of the people speaking at these public hearings for a couple of years, there has been growth every year since I've been speaking, and I'm happy about that, which also supports my rationale for why we should keep the Town and Board budget as is with no cuts. So I would like to address the Board of Education budget because I am a teacher. So I would like to address the Board of Education budget because I am a teacher. I teach in East Hampton, and I have lived in Southington for 11 years. And now my daughter is in first grade. And so I know what I can talk about with this from both the teacher and the perspective. This year and next year is going to be a catch-up year. My daughter, who loves to read, she has completed the 1,000 books before kindergarten program, has a mother who's a history teacher, geeks out watching history documentaries, and has a gazillion book library, has just been told by her teacher that she's behind in decoding. Her teacher emailed me last week informing me that she was behind and suggested that she join the school's boost literacy program. But guess what? There's no room. They're hoping that they get an extra part-time paraprofessional, but that might not happen between now and the end of the school year. And she only has to move up one level, but she said that program would be helpful to get her there. So the support my daughter could use to fill in what I believe to be an educational gap due to COVID, because she has everything at home, cannot be given. And she only represents one student. I can only imagine the needs across the district. Emotionally, I have raised a little girl just like me. She is strong and she is brave, but she has cried many times during COVID about the changes in school, in play, and in life. I am so grateful that the Southington Public Elementary Schools have gone back full-time all year. That has helped her emotionally and academic health so much. But still, she struggles with the changes. I could only imagine what middle and school students are feeling. I don't have to imagine. I teach school, so I know. All my students, I have worked hard to help my students succeed. I find them in their study halls before school, after school. I message them through our school-supported app called Parents/Student Square. I involve their parents. I update grades for accuracy practically daily. But in the past 15 years, I've only given like a handful of Fs, if that. And I don't think I've failed any kids since my first year teaching. This year, I have more Fs and Ds than all my past 15 years of experience combined. The impact COVID is going to have emotionally and academically on students is going to be significant. And I see it at my student high school level, and I see it with my daughter. And that is why I fully support the Board of Education budget because they include extra support staff, extra emotional staff, extra social workfare as an ABA staff, and they're going to need it next year. It's going to be a ripple effect for a few years because if we don't stem that ripple effect, her decoding skills won't get... And she needs these decoding skills now, for her, as an example. Because she's in first grade, it will impact her all the way up into her career if she doesn't get this stuff fixed now. I can only imagine how the high schoolers and middle schoolers are doing. I also welcome any questions as both a parent and a teacher. I will always support tax increases in town, and I support both the town and education budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And you're always welcome too. We're going to have a few workshops, you and everybody in the public. They're open workshops. You're welcome to come if you want to get a little deeper into the discussions. Here, we don't go back and forth. We have any other speakers, anybody else? Through the chat window and chat box and just say you want to speak or wave your hand until we find you. Jay will scroll through the pictures, just see if he sees anybody waving their hand. He'll make sure if you can unmute yourself, unmute and say something. Does anybody see anybody wanting to speak? Do you see, as you're looking at your pictures?
Mr. Chair, Mark, I'm just going to say one more time. If you're on your phone, obviously, you're not going to use the chat function. But if you're on your phone, please press star six. If you wish to talk, just give your name. And obviously, everybody on the computer, you can wave or put your name in the chat. Mr. Baker is prepared to put you on.
And we'll wait. We'll be patient because it seems like a quiet night here. While he's waiting, if anybody has a question about the budget or the process, if you'd like to ask while we're waiting for people to speak, we could... If there's a question anybody has. Any public comments? Again, we'll take a question if somebody has it.
Looks like Dan Hart might be trying to ask something. I'm not sure. He unmuted himself?
Okay. Dan, away. Is he unmuted?
I'm good. I'm just listening.
Oh, I thought you wanted to speak, no?
Just listening for now. Thank you.
Okay, Dan. Again, while we're waiting, any questions? Sometimes people have a question, what do you do with this? What do you... How do you handle... Any question? No questions? We don't want to... We got... Ask the fire chief how the new fire truck is. I'm very proud of it. Right? How's our new fire truck, Chief Paul?
It's fantastic. Responded to many emergencies all weekend, so thank you all for it.
All right, you know, let's be patient because I do want to allow anybody who wants to speak a chance. Get to the chat. It's okay. Seems like it's going to be a lot shorter meeting than the ones in the past. Any member of the Board of Finance want to make a statement to the public and to the department head? Will everybody here?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I can give it some levity in this. I'd like to congratulate the superintendent-elect, Steve Medansky. And it's good to have the two tallest people in Southington eventually running the town. So between me and he, I believe we can have a basketball team up pretty soon. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, Mark.
Congratulations.
If I stand on your shoulders, we'll be taller than Mr. Pepe.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to use Frank's name, but I wasn't going to do that. But there you go. That's about right.
Steve, while you're here, we'll go... How are the schools doing? How are we doing with COVID? Just no detail, just high level. How's everybody doing, all the schools?
The transmission rates are very low right now in schools. We have more students actually returning to in-person in the past four or five weeks after the holidays. And so, you know, our next plan of attack is what to do when everybody wants to come back and make sure we're able to mitigate with spacing and whatnot. But the teachers have been amazing, and the administrative team has been working around the clock, tracing when needed. And the town has been a wonderful partner of us, supporting our needs and being responsive. So I couldn't have asked for a, you know, more supportive year than what we've had, given the circumstances.
I do. I'm trying to, you know, stay open as long as we can here for any member of the public who wants to speak. I never want to have somebody out there trying to unmute. Remember, star six, unmute your phone. You know, wave your hands if you're on here having any difficulty, and Jay will find you. And as administrator, unmute. But just trying to kill a little time, giving everybody a chance to speak. Perhaps in the process, we're going to have a series of workshops. The workshops are where we, the Board of Finance, sit around the table, and we go through things, we ask questions. We don't really engage in too much back-and-forth dialogue unless we want to. It's at our discretion. People could observe those meetings, but we don't want anyone in there lobbying for this or that. But we sometimes do have questions. And over the last few years, we have invited people in. We'll have the town manager there, we'll have a town finance director there. The night we discuss Board of Ed, a lot of... A good chunk of the members of the Board of Ed will come. Leaders in education, some concerned people will come around for that meeting. And oftentimes now, in a change of process from many years ago, we'll turn and ask them questions, and they'll give us some insight right at the time when we're making the decision, which is helpful. We've found that to be helpful over the last... I don't remember how we've been doing, maybe five or six years of budgets. We've had a little bit more collaboration from the times where there was absolutely none. And some of them will emerge with a recommendation, and we'll vote on it. And then that recommendation will be the recommendation that goes to Town Council. They'll have a little more time. Sometimes things change. Numbers become a little bit more clear. They may accept the budget as presented, or they may have some ideas. They may learn some information we didn't know at the time we made the recommendation. And they'll tweak it a little bit, and then they'll approve the budget, which becomes the official budget. They give it back to us, and we determine what the mill rate is. So the Board of Finance, the only thing that they do 100% is nobody else determines the mill rate. So that's a little how the process works. We're somewhat consultatory, trying to read to the Town Council on finance matters. Anybody else have anything? All right. Mr. Shodan, what do you think? Should we... Did we allow enough time? I want to make sure within the four... Everything we've...
I think you were very thorough, Mr. Chairman. I think anyone had the opportunity to speak had the opportunity. So I think now is the time to shut it down here. And anyone who else wants to show up at the workshops, our finance director will be putting the documents together. They'll be on our website.
We're always happy to take a letter, a phone call. And if somebody wanted to show up at our workshop and said, I really wanted to make comments to you, but for some reason I couldn't get them through this night, I will even open up at the workshop if anybody... We have a couple of people who were not able to comment. We'll allow it at the workshop, which is not traditional, but just to make sure everybody had a chance because it is a very, very quiet night. Usually, we'll have at least 10 people comment, if not 50. But I thank everybody for their time. I don't want to waste any more of it. Thank you all. Any comments? We're... All six of us are here to listen. Thank you so much for being part of this, and especially department heads coming in. Thank you.